Hello, I'm Scott Smith, Managing Editor of the Old Colony Memorial and Wicked Local Plymouth. I want to thank all of our candidates for coming to this Candidates Forum, which is a new and exciting collaboration with the Old Colony Memorial, Wicked Local Plymouth, and PAC TV, our programmer for our Government Access Channel. I'm joined tonight by Frank Mann, the Town Hall Reporter for the Old Colony Memorial in Wicked Local Plymouth. We will be acting as the moderators for this forum. Let me explain the format. Tonight, the five candidates for the Board of Selectmen will be participating in the forum. The candidates will be introduced in alphabetical order. They will have two minutes to introduce themselves and speak about who they are and why they're running for this elected office, as well as describing their qualifications for the position. The candidates will then be asked a total of five questions. Each person gets the same question. They will have two minutes to answer each question. The moderator reserves the right to ask a follow-up question. Should the moderator ask a follow-up question, each candidate will have one minute to respond. This will not be a debate. It's a chance for the candidates to let voters know who they are, where they stand on certain issues. So we're ready to begin? For our Board of Selectmen candidates, we have Mr. Kevin Canty, Mrs. Betsy Hall, Mrs. Sheila Joyce, Mr. David Malaguti, and Mr. Anthony Provenzano. Thank you all very much for coming. Mr. Canty will introduce himself first, then Mrs. Hall, Mrs. Joyce, Mr. Malaguti, and Mr. Provenzano. We will then rotate the order of responses for each question moving forward. So each of you will start out first for any given segment. Mr. Canty, you have two minutes for your introduction. Please note that we are keeping time, and we'll ask the candidates to stop speaking that they go over their allotted time. Mr. Canty.
Thank you. My name is Kevin Canty. For those of you who don't know me, I'm a lifelong Plymouth resident, also a local attorney working for the Public Defender as a state employee, taking criminal cases right here out of Plymouth. Additionally, I'm a member of the Town's Advisory and Finance Committee, where I helped oversee the town's annual budget. I'm running for selectman because I believe this town needs a change in our leadership. Our taxes are too high, and our current leaders are not spending your money wisely, and this is making life harder for every resident in Plymouth. Personally, I don't think we should have to be replacing Plymouth South or our sewer main right now, and we wouldn't be if our town leaders were spending enough money to properly maintain town buildings and utilities. I will change this. I also don't think we should be seeing these tax hikes every year, especially since senior citizens are seeing their benefits decrease as our retirees, and wages in the workforce are stagnant in this economy. Our leadership cannot seem to get a hold of spending, but I will change this. And too much tax burden is put on the backs of the residential taxpayer. Town leadership did not do nearly enough to prepare for the exit of Pilgrim Nuclear Power Station from this town, even though they knew for years that that exit was coming. The Nuclear Mitigation Fund has very little money in it. Our leaders do not do nearly enough also to bring new businesses of various types into this town to diversify the tax base and relieve some of the burden on the residential taxpayer. I will change this. Plymouth's leadership has made it more costly to live in Plymouth, harder to raise a family in Plymouth, and much more difficult to retire in Plymouth. I have lived in Plymouth all my life. I plan to stay here and raise a family. I think I have some great ideas on how to improve our town, and I'm asking for the opportunity to implement them. That's why I'm running to be your next selectman. Thank you very much for watching tonight, and I look forward to this debate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canty. Mrs. Hall, please introduce yourself. You have two minutes.
Good evening. Thank you. On November 22nd, 1963, as I was looking for a book in my high school library, an announcement came over the loudspeaker that the president had been shot. Throughout the coming weeks, I heard his famous statement repeated many times. Ask not what your country could do for you, but what you could do for your country. As an impressionable teenager, I took this to heart. In college, I volunteered in the housing development in a crowded city. After college, I taught high school and adult education. I volunteered in many community activities. When I moved to Plymouth in 1978, I again looked for ways to help my fellow residents. I became a guidance counselor. I co-founded and directed a singles group for widowed and divorced people. I coached basketball, served as a Cub Scout leader, and wrote grants for our public schools. I was a member of the League of Women Voters and the Association of University Women. In the late '90s, I was elected as a town meeting member. Later, I became a member of our Energy Committee, and then the Open Space Committee, of which I am now chairman. Realizing that our Sand and Gravel Bylaw needed an update, I volunteered to serve on the Bylaw Review Committee. I was elected chairman of my precinct and became a member of the Committee of Precinct Chairs. Through my participation in all of these committees, I have become knowledgeable about the many issues facing Plymouth. I have developed the skills that a leader needs in order to inspire confidence and solve problems. I have the ability to look at problems in a thoughtful manner, taking into consideration both the present and future results of these decisions. All of these actions have been motivated by one desire, the desire to serve my community. I have lived and worked in Plymouth for almost 40 years. Many of you know me from the various activities in which I have participated. You know that I am honest, sincere, and hardworking. I ask for your vote on May 14th.
Thank you, Mrs. Hall. Mrs. Joyce, please introduce yourself.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sheila Joyce. Thanks to the OCM and PAC TV for sponsoring this debate. Please let me share with you why I'm taking on this challenge. I'm concerned about many of the missteps that, in my opinion, have occurred in Plymouth over the last two decades. I'd like to help the town be more proactive and not reactive. We can't always be putting out the fire. When that occurs, there's no time or energy for strategic and smart planning. This position is not a stepping stone for me, something to do in retirement or part of any career path for me. I truly want to give back to the town so we can make better decisions that will help the residents and the employees grow, so we can head into the next century of our town and be looking good. Our tax rate has gone up 70% in 10 years. I'm pretty sure that no one's income has gone up 70%. No one can afford to continue on this expensive path. I think it's great that so many employees live in this town, they work in it, they have institutional knowledge. Let's take advantage of their knowledge and help them solve our problems. I think there's some big blunders in town, and I think that I can contribute to helping solve them. The biggest one, the wastewater treatment issue. Was there a lack of oversight by the company, the town, or both? No one put chemicals into the pipeline to make the sludge warm. That seems pretty basic to me. Now, we have the same company onboard to manage the $110 million Plymouth South wastewater treatment system. That's pretty scary to me. This expensive example says to me that we need new leadership and energy on the Board of Selectmen. I'm asking you to vote for me, Sheila Joyce. I'm number one on the ballot. Help me, help Plymouth be more proactive and make sound decisions. Thank you for watching.
Thank you, Mrs. Joyce. Mr. Malaguti, will you please introduce yourself?
Good evening, and thank you for this forum. I'm Dave Malaguti, seeking reelection. In other forums this year, I have stated that I am completing my 22nd year on the board. Let me relate a few things. 1981, my first year, was also the first year of Prop 2 1/2, and that was the year we had to shut off unnecessary streetlights to help balance the budget. 1986, the interim order from the Massachusetts Attorney General cited us for improper discharge into the harbor from the wastewater treatment plant. Also in 1986, my first year as chairman, Chernobyl exploded in Russia. 1998, upon my return after an eight-year hiatus, we dealt with a Native American situation, which led to the National Day of Mourning. Also in 1998, we successfully negotiated a payment in lieu of tax agreement with Boston Edison when they sold to Entergy. That agreement provided stability for 10 years. Also in 1998, we sold two unused buildings at my urging, the Cedarville Fire Station and the Howland Street Water Barn. In 2007, we bought the MBO Building and land at Camelot Park to consolidate the DPW, again at my urging, and in direct opposition to the DPW director at that time. In 2008, we successfully negotiated a pilot agreement with Entergy, again gaining financial stability. And in 2015, we have the sewer issue. All this in addition to the normal business that selectmen have to deal with on a daily basis. I'd like to think that there isn't much that can be thrown at the board that I haven't already dealt with. That's why I say a vote for Malaguti is a vote for experience, and I believe that experience is critical with the issues coming in the future. Please vote for me on May 14th.
Thank you, Mr. Malaguti. And Mr. Provenzano, could you please introduce yourself?
Hi. Thank you, Scott. Thank you, Frank, and thank you to PAC TV and the OCM for holding this forum. My name is Tony Provenzano. I am finishing my first term as a member of the Board of Selectmen, and I am seeking a second term because I think that I've made a positive contribution to the board, and I think I bring a perspective to the board that is otherwise not there. I'm an attorney in private practice. I practice mostly estate planning, wills trust, contract law, real estate law. I have an office in the center, at the geographic center of the town, in the Pine Hills, and I have four employees. I have, in the past, been a member and a chairman of the Advisory and Finance Committee. I have spent 10 years on town meeting floors, a town meeting representative from Precinct 3. I've served on the Historic District Committee, the Roads Advisory Committee, and I currently serve on the Distinguished Visitor Committee. I'm also the designee of the board to the South Shore Community Action Council, which is a not-for-profit organization which tends to the needs of some of the more unfortunate folks in our community. And I also serve on the board of the Plymouth 400, which will help to commemorate the 400th anniversary of the landing of the Pilgrims. Some of you know me, some of you've seen my work on the Board of Selectmen, and I hope you've appreciated what I've done. I try to bring a thoughtful approach. I try to sometimes be persistent. I have sometimes fought battles and not won all of them, but I think I bring common sense and a business-like approach to the board. So I hope you'll consider me for one of the two votes that you have on Saturday, May 14th. When you go to the polls, please think of me, Tony Provenzano, and consider me for one of your two votes. Thanks. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Provenzano. Now it's time for our first question. We're proceeding in alphabetical order, beginning with the second candidate, and we'll continue to rotate like this through the forum. Town Hall reporter Frank Mann will be asking the first question.
Good evening, Mrs. Hall. You will answer first. Remember, you have two minutes to respond. First question is, upon Pilgrim Nuclear Power Station's closure, what should happen with that beautiful property that Pilgrim has been sitting on for 45 years? The 1,500-plus acres of largely unspoiled Pine Barrens with views of Cape Cod Bay?
I think that this is a beautiful piece of property, and I have hiked it more than once, the parts that are, we who can hike as a member of the public, and it's a very beautiful piece of property. I understand that this will have a variety of different ways to develop. There may be some light industrial and commercial there. There certainly is Cleft Rock there already, which is public property and a place where people love to go and hike. There is oceanfront property that may be developed into housing. So I think that there's going to be a multi-use for this 1,500 acres, all of which will benefit the town of Plymouth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hall. Mrs. Joyce, the same question. Would you like me to repeat the question?
Yes, if you could, please.
Upon Pilgrim Nuclear Power Station's closure, what should happen with that beautiful piece of property? 45 years they've been sitting on it, 1,500-plus acres of largely unspoiled Pine Barrens with views of Cape Cod Bay?
So in terms of developing that land, not developing that land, my first concern would be the safety of the soil, the safety of the surrounding acreage, and after that is determined yea or nay. There's different possibilities, whether it's nature, whether it's open space, whether it's housing development. I think that it's a spectacular view of one of our biggest assets, and my first concern would be the safety of the land, and then we go from there.
Thank you, Mrs. Joyce. Mr. Malaguti, same question. Do you need it repeated?
No. I believe that the town should retain control of that property. I believe the town can develop industrial and commercial, develop some housing, and probably put a lot away in open space, and I would hope the town could control it.
Thank you, Mr. Malaguti. Mr. Provenzano?
Yeah, thanks, Frank. That's correct. There's about 1,600 acres of land that is not really part of the plant proper. The plant proper sits on a site of about 200 acres, so this is really peripheral to the Entergy's operation and has been held by Entergy and with a promise not to develop under the pilot agreement, which has been in place for better than 40 years. I believe that the disposition of this land, or the future use of this land, should be mixed. Folks don't realize that part of that land includes a section that is zoned for light industrial and could become a light industrial park. Unfortunately, the portion that is zoned for light industrial is right next to, it abuts residential on the southern end of the site, and I believe that if any industrial should be allocated from that site, that portion should be moved to a more central location, perhaps along Powerhouse Road. There is ample opportunity to preserve a portion of the property for open space, for passive recreational, and I do believe that we should consider a portion of that land to be developed as residential, perhaps part of the Pine Hills community. The Pine Hills community has been extremely beneficial to the town, and I think that if a portion of that land, which does abut the Pine Hills development, is developed in a similar fashion, again with open space, that kind of creative land use, that it will benefit the town from a financial standpoint and still preserve the rural character of the town. So I think that's one of the great opportunities, quite frankly, that the closure of the power plant presents to the town of Plymouth.
Thank you, Mr. Provenzano. Mr. Canty, the same question. Would you like it repeated?
No, Frank. Thank you. Frank, I think the first thing we have to do when that nuclear power plant closes is make sure that the nuclear waste that's there is safe and secure. We need to work with our state and federal delegations to secure that. That's just priority one, the moment that they shut their doors. After that point, I think we have to look at what this land is best for. I think that this 1,500 to 1,600 acres is a great opportunity for several uses. I think that some of it should be set aside for mixed, in mixed places for open space. I think that some of it would be a great place for commercial business into town, some light industrial, but not to ruin the character of that particular area. But I think that we should try and get some economic benefit out of this land. I think we really need to diversify our tax base, and we can't have the residential taxpayers in town paying all this money that they're paying right now. And it's a great opportunity for something that's coming back onto our roles to be developed in a responsible way, that's consistent with the character of the location. We can put some residential developments in there as well, since certainly that's a pristine area that would probably fetch a significant valuation for the town and be of a lot of use and a lot of value to the people who would live there. But overall, this is a thing that should benefit the entire community. I don't think we should dedicate all of it to any one specific purpose. That's a significant chunk of real estate, and we can get a lot more out of it than we have been over the last 45 years while Entergy and its predecessors have been sitting on that land. I'm very optimistic about the future of this property, and I think it can help bring some life into Plymouth after Entergy leaves. Certainly, we need to look to other areas of the town where residential needs to be developed, commercial needs to be developed, and certainly industry needs to be developed. But that's one opportunity where we can do all of these things while still maintaining some open space. I think it's a bright spot in the future of Plymouth. Thank you very much.
I'm going to follow up. Mr. Provenzano mentioned the possibility that the property could be used for Pine Hills for additional housing, and one of the things I think we've heard around town is that they're aggressively pursuing that. So I'd like to ask almost a yes or no question as a follow-up. Would you favor the Pine Hills developing that 1,500 acres into residential? That would go to Mrs. Hall for a one-minute response.
Actually, we don't own that property at this time. It's still owned by Entergy, so that decision is still to be made down the road. But I would want to see most of the property kept in open space, and I would want to see the rest of the property be decided in a very thoughtful way how it would be developed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Joyce?
So we're talking 1,500 acres. Presently, right now, Pine Hills is about 3,300 acres. I don't think 1,500 acres are necessary to get added into the Pine Hills development. The Pine Hills is the biggest taxpayer in town. They pay over $15 million, and they're about 2/3 of the way built out. So I think that a portion of that would be an economic boon for the town, as well as bringing in other types of commercial development and other development in there, and it would be a win for everybody.
Thank you, Mrs. Joyce. Mr. Malaguti?
I would say, Frank, probably not. I would favor some residential development, but I would like to see more open space and more commercial and industrial, and I think the town is best equipped to make that allocation.
Thank you. Mr. Provenzano, would you like to elaborate on your answer before?
Sure. I mean, I think that I wouldn't favor the entire parcel be absorbed into the Pine Hills, certainly, but I think that there is certainly enough land and could be configured in a way that could be developed in a creative way for housing. And Pine Hills has really shown us how creative residential development can very much benefit the town. I would also say, to the extent that we have the ability to go with an industrial portion there, we should think of the Plymouth Industrial Development Corporation, which developed the industrial park as a model going forward on how we might want to take, not the whole thing, of course, but a portion, responsible development there, because we want to create a situation in this town where people have the opportunity to work here and live here. We don't want everyone to have to be a commuter.
Thank you, Mr. Provenzano. Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Frank. I think that the Pine Hills already has a significant amount of real estate in the town. They still have space to grow within their own existing confines, and I think that we should keep the Pine Hills as they are. I think that this space is best used for commercial and for industrial purposes, primarily with some space left as open space, because those three uses benefit the entire community. The additional residential that we could put in there, I think, should be used sparingly. I think that there is a benefit to having some residential space in there, but I'm not in favor of giving it to the Pine Hills, perhaps to a new developer, maybe a new smaller community, or even just a few residential plots within this large area. I think that we should primarily be looking at it in a way to diversify our tax base with these commercial and industrial ventures, and then because of the pristine natural environment, keeping a lot of it in open space for the benefit of everyone. That's my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Canty.
Okay, we're going to go on to question number two, and we're going to start with Mrs. Joyce. The town sewer main disintegration problem has caused a great deal of strife throughout the town, especially as to who should pay the $48 million cost to fix it. How did this problem happen, and who should pay to fix it?
If I knew who caused the problem or how did the problem happen, that would be an interesting answer. I don't think anybody has a definitive answer. I think there's multiple parties that were asleep at the switch, so to speak, who should pay for it. I am not in favor of it being equitably distributed to every homeowner, business owner in the town. From my perspective, the precedent was set many years ago. The $26 million that was expended for the original system that was put in 15, 16 years ago, $6 million was put to the general tax base, and 16, 17 million was put to, I'm sorry, $20 million was put to the ratepayers. So that's a 24/76 split. My perfect world would be it gets charged to the ratepayers that use the system. I don't know whether it's totally fiscally responsible or feasible, but I do not think it should be equitably distributed to everybody in town.
Thank you, Mrs. Joyce. Mr. Malaguti, would you like me to repeat the question?
No. The subject of who is responsible, I would prefer not to comment on because there is a pending lawsuit, and I don't want to violate any confidentiality. As far as the payment, I'm going to say the same thing I've always said. I'm going to stick with it. I'm not going to change my story. It needs to be a balance. I don't know what that balance is until we have all the facts and figures, but I realize the ratepayers are going to have to pay more, but some of it has to go on the taxpayers too. It's a community problem, and when I say it's a community problem, there are five schools on the sewer system, two fire stations, the Town Hall, the Courthouse, Old and New, the Registry of Deeds, Memorial Hall, the Spire Center, the Library, Shops at Five, or the Grove, I guess it's called now, Colony Place, Beth Israel Deaconess Hospital, Medical Centers, and the County Jail. If that doesn't make it a community problem, I don't know what would.
Thank you, Mr. Malaguti. Mr. Provenzano?
Yes, Scott, we're not going to really know who or what was to blame or who's at fault until the litigation concludes, and that, quite frankly, will be sometime down the road. In terms of who should pay, this sewer plant is an enterprise fund. The primary responsibility for paying for sewer is the users. There's 3,300 users on the system. There is an opportunity, though. The debt service that will be paid on this, on $48 million, by the time interest is done, will be over $60 million, and it is not practical, at least for a period of time, for the ratepayers to pay. And when I say for a period of time, that's because the original debt service on the original plant will not be paid off until 2023. Now, in 2023, that original plant will have been paid off, and the ratepayer will be in a position to pick up the remainder of the debt service that would have to be paid from that point on. Now, whether that works out to Mrs. Joyce's 24/70-whatever split, I don't know, but I think it's going to be awfully close. The ratepayer ultimately is going to pay the lion's share of this debt service, but the taxpayer may be called upon for a period of time to pick up some of that debt service so that we don't have a rate spike in the service area. What I'm seeking to do, what I would seek to do, is to have rate stabilization and a fair allocation without a spike to the sewer user, but without the sewer user having their rate cut in half, which would have happened if the original debt had been paid off and there was nothing on the back end. Why should the taxpayer at that point pick up when the ratepayer will be perfectly able to pick up the debt service without an increase in sewer rates?
Thank you, Mr. Provenzano. Mr. Canty?
Thank you, Scott. Scott, this problem happened plain and simply because of poor management. Whether or not the company is directly responsible, or whether it's someone in town management who's directly responsible, the town still bears the brunt of the fact that we should have been overseeing them more directly and making sure they were doing the things we want to do. When you hire somebody to do a job for you, you're supposed to make sure that they do it properly. And if you let somebody do work in the dark and then complain about how it turned out later on the road, I mean, I think that's, a lot of that falls on you. So we need to take responsibility for our role in the leadership here, not my role because I wasn't involved yet. And I think we need to change the leadership in this town so that we don't have this problem coming back again, because I think if we don't change leadership, you don't change the input that you're getting, you're going to get the same output down the road. I think that in order to fix this problem, it is a community problem. Both ratepayers and taxpayers need to contribute into this thing, and I think that the brunt of it is going to be borne by the ratepayers, because whatever we do, ratepayers are taxpayers too. I think it's fair that the whole community shares some burden on this, because it is a community issue. Community services are on there, whether or not you have a septic system or sewer system or something else. You know, you still go downtown, you still go to the hospital. Hopefully, you don't go to the jail, but in terms of these other things, we all need those services. We all need this community to do well, and you need to invest in your community. And when an issue affects the entire town, everybody in the town needs to contribute to fixing it. But we really need a change in the leadership practices in this town and a change in the culture of underfunding the maintenance and not supervising the people that we contract out to build things or to repair them or maintain them. That's the only way we're going to stop this from reoccurring in the future. Hopefully, we'll win in this lawsuit and be able to pay for some of it with that, but we can't depend on that. So that's the solution that I propose for this problem as it stands right now. Thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Canty. Mrs. Hall?
Thank you. One of the things that has disturbed me about the whole sewer problem is that I have heard several times that the ratepayers were promised that the sewer would be extended and that this would help reduce the ratepayers' per-person cost. And I understand that since the sewer system was put in, there has been very little expansion. I'm glad now that that promise is starting to be kept, and we will expand the system to Market Basket, but keeping our promises to people who abut property, to people, ratepayers, whoever they are, I think is something that we need to pay very careful attention to if people are going to have faith in their government. I agree with Mr. Provenzano about rate stabilization and fair allocation. I think it's wonderful that our great financial director was able to get 0% interest for us for the next two years, and certainly during that five-year period where the ratepayers are paying two different bills, we will have to help them. We don't want to drive any of our neighbors out of town with unreasonable rates. On the other hand, yes, the ratepayers will eventually be covering most of the cost of this as we go down the road, and I think that the more we can expand the sewer system and the more ratepayers there are, the more benefit they will be to everyone. Thank you.
And thank you, Mrs. Hall. Frank?
We'll move on to question number three, and Mr. Malaguti, you'll be the first one to respond. Plymouth has a civic problem, a lack of civic engagement, as represented to respond. "Plymouth has a civic problem, a lack of civic engagement, as represented at least by the minuscule voter turnout at town elections, like the one coming up in a short time. It's not just a Plymouth problem, of course, but this is America's hometown, the birthplace of the Mayflower Compact, which gave rise to the first constitution in America and is the foundation of our national constitution. Should something be done to improve civic engagement, and if so, what would you want done?"
I'm not really sure how to answer that, because there is terrible voter apathy in this town, and it's not only this town, it's all over. I don't know what we have to do to engage our citizenry more. It's sad that people don't participate in a greater quantity in the local election, because it's the local election that has the most impact on the individual. I don't know. I don't know what you do. You can't drag them out kicking and screaming, but I really don't know. I don't have a good answer, I must admit.
Thank you, Mr. Malaguti. Mr. Provenzano?
Yeah, thanks, Frank. We've talked about this in the past, and we've talked about it in the context of whether or not the town should change its form of government and whether that would help. And I think along the lines of what I've talked to you about before, this is a broadly prescriptive government. This form of government allows for the broadest number of people to participate, both through town meeting action, through boards and commissions. So strangely enough, we have this large number of folks who are engaged in the process, and yet an even larger number of people who sit back and do not engage. And what's also frustrating to me is the fact that your town government, your local government, in some way affects your life so much more than the state or the federal government, and yet those state elections and those federal elections have a much higher voter participation rate. It astounds me. So it is frustrating. I almost don't know what to say about how to get people to engage, because this form of government, which I love, and I love it because people do have a voice, because they are able to participate, because you have such a number of people who can engage. And if you change the form of government and create more of a mayoral form, you're going to reduce that by so much. You're going to take the voice of the people away. It will be more efficient, I suppose, but, you know, there are a lot of efficient forms of government that I certainly wouldn't want to live under. So encourage good people to get involved and talk to their neighbors. And I hope we have a voter participation rate a week from Saturday, and I hope folks will come out to vote for me, but I hope they'll come out to vote.
Thank you, Mr. Provenzano. Mr. Canty, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, Frank, thanks. I haven't. Frank, I think it's really embarrassing, the level of voter turnout that we have. Last year, only 12% of registered voters came out. That means 88% of voters had something else they had to do that day, or they stayed home. And that's discouraging. I mean, I think 100% of the voters in this town have an opinion on what should be done, particularly with the sewer problem coming up that's got everybody thinking about what their town government has done or hasn't done over the last few years. I really think that people need to get out there and vote. I mean, I personally don't like the trajectory that our town has been going in recently, and that's why I'm running for selectman, not just going to vote in the election. You know, I really think we need to fundamentally change how we deal with problems, how we plan for our future, how we operate as a town fiscally, year in and year out. We don't plan enough for the long term, and I think a lot of people agree with me on that point. The question is, how do we get those people to actually come out and go to the polls? I think we moved the election day this year as a case study to see if that's going to improve voter turnout. Obviously, the results are not in yet. We'll see what the turnout looks like there after a couple of years of trying this out. I think we need to get out education about it. I think that starts at the school level, although obviously that takes a while to see if that's working. And I think we need to just, overall, get the word out of how important this is. I mean, what Tony said about town elections impacting you a lot more than your state and your federal elections, I mean, that's true. It affects your tax rate. It affects whether you can afford to retire somewhere based on those taxes. It affects what your children are going to be taught in school, affects everything, basically, in your life. And, you know, the things that the president does in the Oval Office don't affect you nearly as much as what happens down 11 Lincoln Street. So this is an election where we have an opportunity to try and get people out. I assume if you're watching this at home, you're probably going to vote. Either that, or your remote is broken and you're horribly bored. But I would ask you to please come out and vote this Saturday, May 14. Thank you.
Mrs. Hall?
Yes, I certainly hope that people will come out and vote, that before they vote, they will educate themselves to all of the issues and all of the candidates. I think that what PAC-TV and the OCM and Wicked Local are doing in terms of forums, also the League of Women Voters, giving people an opportunity to get to know their candidates is very important. I also think that education is important. I think there can be ways in which we can engage our high school students more in the whole process of local government, that we can encourage our, maybe, classes in history and so forth to actually come to selectmen's meetings. People aren't familiar with a lot of things that go on in local government, and so they don't feel as much a part of it. So if we could make people more familiar, I do know, however, that people do watch PAC-TV, because they'll come up to me afterward and say, "I saw you on TV," on, you know, like, for example, the Committee of Precinct Chairs. So I know that people are watching. One of the interesting questions that I have is, are people fairly content? Do they not get too hysterical about getting out to vote because they're not that unhappy? Will we find a lot more people voting now that the sewer issue has come up? I find that with selectmen's meetings, it's often the people who are unhappy with something, who attend the selectmen's meetings, not the people who are happy. So maybe the low turnout indicates a certain amount of contentedness and confidence in the leaders that we have. We'll have to wait and see what happens on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hall. So the answer is anger. Ms. Joyce, Mrs. Joyce, excuse me.
Thanks, Frank. A couple of different things that I've thought of in terms of trying to increase voter participation. As an example, when I went to the town clerk's office to get the listings of local election versus the presidential primary a couple of months ago, I was amazed at the difference. And I said Plymouth does come out to vote. They came out to vote for the presidential primary early March. So one of the things that I've been thinking about is, in different towns that I've lived in other than Plymouth, is combine the local election with, whether it's a US Senate election, governor election, because even as an example, when Scott Brown was running for US Senate, and it was the dead of winter, and people came out to vote, it was a higher-level election was at stake. So I think they come out for the bigger elections, combine the local with the national or the state election would be my suggestion. Another thing that I know that's going to be tried this year is, my husband had petitioned the Board of Selectmen less than a year ago to get some signage put out. I know a lot of towns, they put signage out reminding people, you know, "Vote next Tuesday, vote next Saturday." So there will be signs going out to different locations in Plymouth. Hopefully, that will make an impact as well. And all these different little things, I think that hopefully the participation will be increased next Saturday.
Thank you, Mrs. Joyce.
Hey, Mr. Provenzano, we're up to question number four already. Time's flying along. "The argument is being made by some that raising the transfer station fee to cover those costs to a level that's more or less equal to the fee paid by curbside customers would be unfair to the elderly. How specifically would that be unfair to the elderly, and what numbers substantiate it? And if so, what do you see as a resolution?"
Well, I think you're making Mr. Malaguti's argument, but let me give you a little perspective on what the issue is. Couple of years ago, the town adopted a curbside pickup. The curbside pickup is for all residents of the town, with the exception of folks in the Pine Hills, people in condos, people in multifamily housing who use private haulers. So it's available to all. There was stiff opposition to having the transfer station closed at that time, and as a compromise, the Board of Selectmen kept the transfer station open. Three years on, we now see that the market is taking its toll, and people are migrating to the curbside pickup. Now, like the sewer, solid waste is an enterprise fund. It's supposed to pay for itself. The costs of running a transfer station are a fixed cost. There's no real way to reduce it. And if the transfer station users are going to pay for it, and there's a dwindling number of transfer station users, by necessity, if the transfer station's going to pay for itself, the fee is going to go up. We received numbers at last week's town, uh, selectmen's meeting, which indicate that the fee would have to go up comparable to what it costs for the basic curbside pickup, which is $196. Last year, the Board of Selectmen chose to subsidize the transfer station users because they felt that the rate increase would have been too much for them to absorb. I think the argument on the elderly is more their ability to wield, to handle the carts as opposed to the cost. But I don't want to put words in Mr. Malaguti's mouth. You'll get him four people from now. But what I've laid out for you is the cost problem that we have, and the thing that we're going to have to make a decision on next Tuesday night.
Okay. Thank you, Tony. And, Mr. Canty, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I have it, Scott. Thank you. I think that, really, this is something that does have a fixed cost, and we can predict what it is going to cost to operate the curbside. I think we need to bring, I mean, to operate the transfer station. We need to bring the costs up to be equivalent, at least, to the curbside pickup. Everybody has access to both things. I would think if you were elderly, the curbside might be more convenient, but maybe in certain circumstances, the opposite is true. But this way, you have the flexibility to use either of these things. We can't underfund drastically the transfer station fee, because then everybody is paying to subsidize this when only a few thousand people are using it out of a significant community. And so I think what we really need to do is bring those costs more in line so it can get closer to sustaining itself, and hopefully, over time, will actually be sustaining itself based on the numbers of users that are there. But the curbside pickup is an option that is available through everyone in the town who doesn't have some other option already existing to take care of their trash. And I think that both options are viable for people. I know that some people don't like the orange bag, pay-as-you-throw system. They're using private haulers instead. But either system, both the private haulers and the town system, is drastically increasing recycling in town, which we're seeing a tremendous benefit from. I think that the transfer station is a community asset, and I'd like to keep it open for the people who need it there. And some things are better thrown away in that facility than thrown away at a curbside, and people know if that's the type of trash they generally get, that that's the better option for them. So I do want to keep the transfer station open, but there needs to be a change in that fee so it can get closer to sustainability of itself for this community, to keep that asset alive, but also have the curbside open for the people who don't want, who would prefer that method. Thank you, Scott.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Canty. Mrs. Hall?
I'm not sure if I'm elderly or not, but I really like, I really like the curbside system. As an older person, I find that the ability to recycle conveniently, before the curbside came along, I was recycling at the transfer station, and I hated it. I found, you know, collecting all that stuff and putting it in a truck and getting it there was very inconvenient for me. So I really like the curbside pickup, and I love that recycling is happening at a much higher rate in the town of Plymouth, and I hope it continues to increase. I do have neighbors who definitely are elderly, in their 80s, and the curbside management has been wonderfully cooperative with them in helping them to solve their problem. They live in a very steep driveway, and ABC is our current management. They have been very helpful, and my neighbors are very grateful that they can participate in the curbside pickup, and they have for the last three years. So I think that if people are willing to work with the management, they can solve, hopefully, any problems that they have in terms of pickup. If not, then they can, I hope they will turn to the selectman or turn to the DPW and get more help in solving that problem. I don't think that people should feel alone and, you know, helpless if they're elderly. Hopefully, other people will be willing to step forward in the town and help them out. The ratepayers, again, everyone who uses curbside or uses a transfer station, they're ratepayers, and this is an enterprise fund. And I think that to ask me to pay for my own curbside pickup and then to pick up the cost of somebody else probably is not reasonable. Thank you.
And thank you, Mrs. Hall. Mrs. Joyce, can you answer this question?
My thoughts, I think, pretty ethical, what has already been said in terms of the system. It's an enterprise fund. It should sustain itself and cover its costs. And last year, I was surprised, and I'd have to say honestly, a little disappointed, that the selectman did not have the rate for the transfer station cover the cost and, you know, kind of artificially on the curbside pickup. I think it's wonderful that the trash has gone down. People are recycling. I think it's necessary. Plymouth is a beautiful town. I feel very bothered when I'm driving around town and I see all the trash on the sides of the road, and we need to improve upon that. And in terms of the rates, if you use it, you should be paying for it equitably. As Betsy said, if the person is using it, they need to cover their costs. When the proposal was put forth, I know the DPW Director JB was very conscientious, and I know he worked with the ABC Vending Company. And different roads that were small, that were narrow, this size truck would be going down this road. If it was a wider street, this type of truck would be going down the road. And I think they've made many accommodations that have been helpful to, you know, people who live on narrow streets, dirt streets, whatever, and I think it's a win for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Joyce. Mr. Malaguti, shall I repeat the question for you?
No, I have it. I firmly believe, and others believe, that the curbside was forced on the community. I think there's a trend that we just, we want to get out of the solid waste business, and I don't think we should. I am not hearing the good reports that Betsy has stated that the company is really good on working with the customers. I'm not getting those reports. I'm getting just the contrary. And a lot of the elderly who speak with me and give me their concerns, they can't handle those big barrels. It's just too much for them. They can put a couple of small bags in their cars, and one elderly person in particular uses two small bags a week. He throws them in the back of his trunk. He can put those into the compactor. He can handle the recyclables. He can't wield the containers down his driveway. It's just too steep. And those are the people that I care about and fear that they're going to be cast by the wayside. Now, these elderly people who can't handle their trash containers are the same elderly people who are living on social security, maybe $1,300, $1,400 a month. So any increase is really hurting them. I just don't think it's fair to those people, and I don't want to see them thrown aside, cast aside.
Okay, sir. Thank you very much. I'm going to turn the last question over to Frank.
Thank you. Final question of the evening. We've moved along kind of nicely. For our final question, it's going to go to Mr. Canty to begin with. Judging by the recent harsh comments of many Pine Hills residents about the sewer main problem, about taxes, assessments, criticism's often filled with a little bit of misinformation, and even a call for the Pine Hills to separate from Plymouth. Do you think it was a mistake to create such a separate community? What is the solution to this apparent problem?
Thank you, Frank. I don't think creating the Pine Hills was a mistake. I think the Pine Hills brings a lot to the town, and I know that some of the residents in the Pine Hills are not happy with their current relationship with the town. There is some misinformation out there. You know, the Pine Hills is a community of people with, some, they consume some taxes, some services, but pay a full boat of taxes. That's the deal that that community struck when they developed that land. I think that the people who moved into that community right now need to educate themselves about what exactly they are getting in terms of town services, what exactly they are paying for. I think that it's a little bit of a better deal than they think it is. And I think, too, that they need to understand, and we all need to understand, as we deal with this sewer problem, that this is a community issue, and that most issues of this nature, whether it's building a school or fixing a road, even if it's not your road or the school that your kids are going to go to, that's something that affects the whole community. And the value of having a community is us all working together, and we can all do more as a combined unit than we can separately, either individually or by dividing ourselves into little villages or town centers or even just on a development level. So I think we really need to come together at times like this, and I think that creating, I don't think we should ever talk about separating any part of this town from any other part of this town. This town has been one community combined of Plymouth for 400 years now. Obviously, when the colony was first developing, some things offshot, but it's been a long time since we were one unified community, and we need to keep together and not divide ourselves further. We should have honest and frank discussions with each other about the things that are impacting our lives, and we should impacting our lives, and we should come together to create solutions and not focus on what's dividing us, particularly when things are as difficult as this sewer problem has been because of the management of the town in the recent past. Thank you.
Mrs. Hall?
I do have to take issue with the word "many," harsh comments of many Pine Hills residents. Oftentimes, the people who are kind of loud and angry and complaining sound like many, but it doesn't mean that they represent the entire Pine Hills. I hike weekly with people who live in Pine Hills, and we have discussions about costs. And I think they understand that I have the same costs that they have. I have a septic system, I have a well, I have to replace those when they fail. I have spent already a lot of money on those. And I think that if people truly understand that we're all paying taxes and we're all paying sewer and water costs one way or the other, that it really is helpful and it does help to dispel the misinformation. One of the things I haven't had time to research, but I really am interested in, is Pine Hills really the biggest taxpayer in the town of Plymouth? Do they pay more taxes than all the people who live on the coast of Plymouth? Do they pay more taxes than all the people who live in ponds of Plymouth? I don't know. I keep hearing those figures, but I haven't seen them substantiated, so I don't know if they pay the most taxes in the town of Plymouth. Do they pay more taxes than all the people who live in the Sixth Ponds area, on all of those beautiful ponds like Long Pond? And do they pay more taxes than the people who live on Herring Pond? Again, I don't know. I do know that we are one community and that the Pine Hills residents are fabulous volunteers in our town. They take great pride in our community, and they are working in our hospitals, our COA, our schools. I love the Pine Hills residents that I know and those who I don't know, and I think that not just a few people who are loud and angry should represent that community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Hall. Mrs. Joyce?
So Betsy, I'm glad to know that you love me.
I do. I always have.
So for folks that don't realize, I do live in the Pine Hills. I've lived in the Pine Hills since 2003. I'm very proud to be a resident of Pine Hills, and I'm very proud to be a resident of Plymouth. And just to kind of dispel some misconceptions or things that people might have heard, read in the paper, et cetera, Pine Hills is not a separate community. There is no front gate, back gate. People drive through it all the time, and as I'm driving through different parts of the community to either get up to the highway, go over to the market, the bank, et cetera, there are many, many people that do not live in the physical community of Pine Hills that take advantage of the services. They go to Mamma Mia's, they go to the bank, they go to the market. So I think people have created that separateness artificially. When the Pine Hills was granted permission after four town meetings, the town required the Pine Hills development to create an OSMID, open space mixed-use development, and the criteria, some of the criteria that was Pine Hills would be on a separate septic system, separate water system, because the town did not want to maintain those costs. There are a lot of other separate communities in the town of Plymouth that you might say, White Cliffs, Ponds of Plymouth, other developments, Red Brook is starting to come online. We're all one community. We all live in the town, and we do get services from the town, not as many others, but as my husband and I made the choice to live in the community, we're proud to be in the community, and we want to contribute to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Joyce. Mr. Malaguti?
It would disturb me greatly if we considered the Pine Hills not part of our community. Having lived here all of my 68 years, we are the town of Plymouth, and I think we should all feel that we are part of the town of Plymouth. And I think the Pine Hills is a very good option for those who choose to live that lifestyle and that type of development. The developers wanted the smaller roads. The developers wanted the winding roads rather than straight roads that looked so cookie-cutter type. They wanted the trees, they wanted the minimum of tree cutting. These were all decisions made by the developer. Some provisions were outlined by the town, but most of it was as a result of the development team. And there is a great amount of misinformation that goes out there. We need to communicate better. We need to understand each other better. We need to all work together, and I consider them my friends and my neighbors, and I hope they consider me the same, although I doubt it.
Thank you, Mr. Malaguti. Mr. Provenzano, you get the final word.
Well, thank you, Frank, and thank you, Scott, and thank you for having this forum. It was a great opportunity to talk to folks and to let them know our views. My office is in the Pine Hills. Many of my clients are in the Pine Hills. I was a town meeting member when the Pine Hills was developed, when the idea was passed after much struggle on town meeting floor. And it's done a great deal for this community. In a way, the problem, if you want to call it, with the Pine Hills is that they share a demographic with four out of the five members of this panel tonight. Like me, their children are out of school. They're not really using a lot in the way of town services. But that's just as true for four of us, or, you know, as it is Mrs. Joyce. But of the people that I know in this town, I can't say that the people in the Pine Hills don't want to have a great school system. They support the schools. They support this town. They're great neighbors. They've brought great vitality to this town. They bring great expertise. They populate many of the boards and commissions in this town. This town is richer because of the Pine Hills and the people of the Pine Hills. So I'm very glad to call them my neighbors. And I think that the town has to recognize that there may be some frustration, but I hear frustration from a lot of taxpayers, not just those in the Pine Hills. Plenty of people tell me what I'm doing wrong. Some of them are sitting right here. It goes with the territory. So I think we go together forward as a community. I think we meet our challenges, and I want to, again, thank you, folks, and I want to ask people to consider giving me one of the two votes they have Saturday, May 14th, and thanks for the opportunity to speak.
Mr. Provenzano. And thank all of you for your time. And turn it back over to Scott Smith.
This concludes our Board of Selectmen's Candidate Forum. I thank you all very much for participating and wish you the very best of luck in the town election. For our viewers, we ask that you participate by voting in the town election on May 14th. We hope that you have enjoyed this informative candidate forum. For additional replay times, please visit the PAC-TV website at pactv.org. On behalf of the Old Colony Memorial, Wicked Local Plymouth, PAC-TV, thank you so much for joining us tonight.